Hey, good evening, good evening, everyone. Getting used to being in the room now versus virtually. As a chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipate that the agenda coming to meet members of the community, just by giving a very Elizabeth, double it up. Yes. Mary Bramble? Yes. Hillary is absent. Mara? Yes. After very yes. And just as a because we are all person. Correct. So we will just do. Yeah, just want to remind everyone of this. Okay. Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, respond. Here, Brian House?
Here.
Robert? Yes. Chuck here. Okay, okay.
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Bar?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see him. Sorry. When I asked, let's see, this meeting of the major system committee is being conducted as hybrid as to allow for the active or bater sign by sixteen point two. Still continue to accept certain provisions of the O D law regarding the meetings and access to a March 31st, twenty twenty three. This meeting is complete. In person, as on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. For you aware that her folks may be able to see you and take your notes and screen share your computer. Broadcast may be activated by recording, which is audible at the public. If you are ready to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raising hand picture now. To notify. No one. Along with the agenda, most of its materials are available on the website. Folder titled twenty two, twenty three agendas under the tabs school committee. Public is encouraged to follow along using the listed agenda and document. I will share those otherwise. Public comments. At the agenda is devoted time in the school committee to give the public as such instruction, supports and directional for the public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. The grounds are, one, if anyone in person wishes to speak, oh, sorry, remotely or virtually wishes to speak, they can do so by signing up on Google Lake. And we will need to have your zoom. We will be unmuted when you raise your hand. I have to speak to your comments. All comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. The person they comment will want to wish to share as a share, make consider allowing persons comments at a time. Also email in advance. We have one. Right. You can do so up into the agenda item by emailing comments for S E week at major dot page file that may that invest by stating a subject line of the comments. Your first meeting. Last thing, because now you are in to ensure your comment read. Comments read by the chair will be read in three minutes. If they are longer, they'll be even a part of rest sure all comments of your time will be submitted for. On record. Anyone who wishes to submit a comment after all the comments has passed can continue to mail the comments for S E meeting at mayor dot Q twelve and A W S up until then. I think go the process. Okay. I'm going ahead and call the next quarter and seven oh six, we are low cost. Mary Bramble? Here. Oh, actually. All right, we need more. Everybody's here. Okay. I'll go ahead and any public comments we have one. But I wanted to see if you mind any on. All right. Anyone online wishing to have a public comment? One. Okay. I have one mail public comment. To the members of the mayor's school committee, we are resident, made of residents and parents of the kind. That was student. I urge you to reconsider the power specifications of the new better project. Using outlay venture source of power to save some money now is not a work for misleading sound decision. It's time for mayor to meet the demands and challenges of the future. And of course, living as if a changing climate is a problem, fully dealing with her. It's already here. It's time to add. Thank you. It just dropping at one was most street. Now, to take urgent.
No.
A student report. Last time I've been working with everybody. Need to learn. You know. And boards about that. Okay. I don't know if any of the members had any comments or questions, but maybe we could, if so, just maybe look now. And mail afterwards. Did you want to summarize what they? Um, yeah, sure. Highlights, council members, the Congress, I mean, asked state conference in Kansas. Larger science students attended different science conference and working strength personally saying Deca members are awesome at their state level competition. Mayor has a notable increase in students qualified this year and like business classes starting next year, we are hoping for continued improvement in Deca. The boys basketball team is around to the round eight in that MIA tournament at High River Beach High School on Friday evening. Our spring symbol of activity is this weekend, Thursday and Friday, I said. Concerns, discussions and solutions. The SAG, the Doc, we charter to govern that and to structure our discussions. We are working as a group to those changes to the student handbook for next year. And upcoming signups and first meetings are taking place for spring sports. We will have baseball, softball, track and field and come up boys across the western. Next week is my Spanish. Trust. Apparently, I we look at all states down in this fun region. And thank very much for that. And next on the agenda.
I don't have anybody. Either side. We.
Can't miss it.
So really, my update is kind of the student representative of a little bit the decade competition in Boston, the immune biology posing them the area relatively. I thought it was Friday and Saturday, so we should just that. I think.
No.
They were.
But it's.
I haven't just running.
I could have totally run it wrong. So please.
Right. Oh, so this is bettering. Spring athletics, the adult are rolling, are rolling. Follow school, as you know. Lead it on. Well, very excited. It's coming to visit later this month. So that's exciting. They have.
And I did a curse today. I think she asked a question about the transition. But yeah, do you want to be a yellow letter?
Yeah, so he'll come in, I think. About to speak to spend half the day just to complain and David would explain myself. He's teaching students and then we'll set up some times that he can continue to go back with that. And too very excited.
I think after the school year is over, he doesn't have students, we don't have students, we got him really late June.
Yeah, absolutely. Three metals will be excited to be going on there by left out, but fundraiser and follow this, the step up program to. That's. We met up, we could read a book, so a lot of reading books of Eric, the book fair. And if you are so much, let's see my skills. And we're done and we believe you fixed up to pick up still. All except in one of us. First of all. A such difficult question. Waste and to participate this year. She hasn't been called or something, but it's a lot of fun. So if you're able to make that, that was an act. There's a, it's at the high school. And that. Six or seventeen. They are, if you've seen, you know, back in the day, you saw the problem, well, drugs, everything is always on once. They weren't part of that there legit.
They don't want to.
They really, they got a super fun. They do a range of embarrassing us a little bit, but all good fun because a lot of. But it was, it's a bad. Now we'll get on to some really fun stuff. It's good to get to talk about lands because more to have the gate lands and that's. Not very much. Because I. See. You know, we'd say about the brands. Doctor Bill Bond. With lectures, we will get an update at the next meeting. On the twenty third, I invited the athletic director to come and so I shared with you the results of the survey. See that. Today, there's a link to them. So you can review it and then go on top of what exactly what. So that's next. Um, yeah.
Because it came up also, I know it's not much, it's okay. And then again, it can slow work the other evening about the intent to clarify the intent of the survey, what the purpose was, because it was a large conversation. It was really just like that, that interest. It was no.
Try to part words.
No, 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 that is tied within, but I think any major project in how should he lose a level of that. So I understand that would be.
Just to hear from Jennifer State.
Okay.
See, so actually, in addition to the feature that you driven by, they have most like visitor site. Which is really, doesn't seem like they feel it's not very expensive and it really needs being to save the rented features and put them in the center. It's a school, not maybe. You had to do it the right way and make it safe. But they've done that. That's gone. That's great. Facility. So this has been an ongoing issue since I think I started. And it has not been fixed up. High school products for the students part of that. That's if I like a long time. And as soon as something like that happens, it was the technology, they have everything's computer operating. How the lights work. So it's not easy to just say, well, let's just disconnect that and do a switch. Which is, that's what we took away, but wasn't good. The electrician was able to come and identify exactly where she was and it's all so they're fixed all four hundred fifty thousand. Which that's, this is the last company wanted somewhere around fifty thousand dollars to explore things and he was able to really identify. Space. So we're glad that has just been sort of. It's been on a lot of great. Boy. I put snow on there. They done, we invested last at the end of last year. I spread this. And so next. We're just me moving snow. It's already hard job. Who comes in, you know, they have it for Wednesday happens. Luckily, we had one Sunday. It's been a little late, but whatever we needed working out. So that's still. We met up, I would have needed an update on the industry. But I asked the short person is work at it was a, it was warm, six thirty. But it was very intense of it was. Also, school committee, the finals committee and the select board and online or somewhere around the evening that folk and in person, I can ask their number.
Probably thirty, you know, less than another like a fifty twenty.
Yeah, okay. So it was a huge problem. I thought it was huge. So right. It was. So it was an opportunity for people to really voice their opinion and sort of the what I took away has in conversations I've had that people that aren't sustainability group that have the. Every conversation I've heard of this, there is a point we wanted to build. So even some of the people that are like, you want X, Y and Z as a system. First and foremost, they recognize that now we do want, but we a new elementary school. So that's still a report of a conversation. So they are in those conversations and ultimately they took point where I then I assist them and a reputation to the enterprise point that is portable at a time. So that.
As I. To thank everyone who was on the. I know putting that thing together last night was just. It was like, but the presentation was fantastic. You know, the expertise on the committee, I mean, there multiple engineers, different types of engineering, many people is was just, you know, representative of a great effect. So I'm just very, very pleased of the work and I think we're, we're going to get there. I think to a point. So I just wanted to thank everyone there and Hillary and just like here, all members. And we continue to work hard. You can also follow yours and everything to, you know, Marty, I mean, they, they didn't have a lot of these to notice to put together that. Every presentation. And great to. Putting it right. The ring masters, you know, putting together student nineteen, there's nothing that was a big, big challenge. So everybody. It's, you know, one of your conversations that was great.
Yeah, just to echo that, how yours and have that really are shorters they have to. And the level of expertise is kind of fun. I will say, you know, many, there's a handful of us and we're already that are I'm saying that. Then if we understand it programmatically, what I mean, what a school, we got it. Everybody else way more out of it.
It really is. Yeah.
Really. It's a strong.
When Jerry read off everyone's, you know, I was like, so is everyone, except for like very. And different types of years too, you know, and then architecture as well. So I just thought it was a personal representation of the Indian by there and very well. I know it's now it's the same, but it's still a spread so.
So before we go on, just one more addition that I if the bow of the first twenty foot. Then that would be. And to present and ask for acceptance on. And we'll go through my cap plan, the high quality instruction, materials grant, school nutrition, equipment, system. All really important to us. And excited that we have.
Um, we just clarify one thing. I just want to ask you, I think these are competitive branches of these. I know there's something that we get on a re print basis, but these were ended ransom were.
So mine and I don't. But then my cap is really focused on calm career, college readiness. And one of the, yeah, that was really the transition from. Ninth grade is a huge struggle, which we think that about that, but not. Well, so not everybody necessarily thinks you think like you're true. Here. Junior, senior year. Really that ninth grade year sent you off to success. So first, this little position.
We asked like wait. And then ask.
We have the high quality material. We have actually a consultant coming from Tennessee in March as well, March third, fourth. And again, this is companies working on increasing our skills and literacy. Fine. We have seven or so teachers working together on this. We can catch working on this. You know, first specific questions if they're about this. This professional development, literacy, using a high input by material. So it's continuation of the curriculum that we purchased. And that's one of the things I've heard that had been issued in the past is that we purchase something, but we won't purchase it with all of it. We'll work first as a professional development and make the investment in terms of funding. Staff doing little help. So this is an obvious thing to go and make sure we're doing that forever. And really, my our own staff. And that is, and this is great. These are things we need. And this as well, they were helpful in identifying what for this particular grant. So there's a merchandiser, a cold food container, a bench schemer and a whole of it. All set at over twenty eight thousand dollars. So we're very happy to participate in this. Able to contribute for great. Those aren't great. Very good question.
Just the first one. Yeah, I guess. This kind of is just going to tie you to a vision.
I think you could. I think so. Yeah. And I think the following piece is more like exploration for students.
My next question is because I know three, four years ago, we gave a grant, we had foundation, gave a grant to Jean Lavelle, the Empress. And one of the pieces was to have a go down follower for that exploration. So I'm wondering if that, if this is an.
One of the things.
Together.
Yeah, I'm on that grant committee, my cap committee, and we've met a couple of times. And one of the things that Jean Lavelle and I actually talked about is when they do their senior projects, would there be any way for the eighth graders to view when they do their step up day or like however it worked out? And she's like, oh, that would be easy. I didn't think of that. So like we were taught, just getting everybody in the same room. Like Charles says, it's, that's like the most magical part of it that we're all talking. And like saying to, you know, Liz, like what, what do you want our kids to know before they come to to the high school? So it's really, it's really fun.
That's your question. Thank you.
I'm really excited. It's really.
Any other question? No, that was it. That any questions?
No, I'm excited to hear about the mindset. So I will hear more about that as you complete the process. You, I'm not here. I, you have started the process. You're starting planning of the.
Kind of both. High schools probably farther ahead saying they have things in place already where Fowler, we're, we're going to present at the next staff meeting and then ask, do a little exercise and just ask people like, say, this is what my cap is. And then just see if they would just kind of brainstorm what they're doing that might tie in it already. So I don't have to go person to person and ask. And then from there I will create a, the team will create a landscape of what are we doing now? We'll focus on one grade level band and then make some plans going forward, you know, for that.
It's awesome.
Yeah, so it's great.
And rest is great too.
Mara, what's the merchandise?
I will find out. Actually, you know. I think it's unmuted. Might only answer. It might be. That's fine.
I need there, I see.
I don't know if you've heard that question. If you know what a merchandiser is, it's on the nutrition brand. It's part of that twenty eight thousand dollars. It's for it seems. Well, it's for the folks, the eleven thousand dollar item. I didn't know if you knew what that was.
Was that directed at me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, now I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't have the paperwork here. I can I can try and look it up.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I just didn't know if that was one of these you knew. We can get back to.
I was actually, Mike, why do you have a special? I had a question also about this one as well. The way it indicates that the equipment has to be tagged and then how's that like? I mean, is there a certain tag? Yeah.
This is very large, large.
Well, no, I'm telling you guys, you know, I mean, if I remember it was funded by USTA at some point, you know, I could get the, because this is a few if at some point it's sold or forgot the proceeds have to go back to this. This, yes. You know, one of those things that we all may not be here when that happens. And so I'm. Like anyway, that's great. Very exciting. The literacy, I'm super, super excited about that as well because it's two things earlier that it's really advice and things, but getting that for staff so they can feel comfortable with two and two is in you know, which also major went out and better supports for students. Fantastic. Is there an opportunity? I don't, we all got not messing with this grant, but when you vendor or amplify to do something with parents, like a session, I know some. Demo, I think there's so much curiosity for cats because a lot of it, I mean, it's not the typical, like, you know, it's different. Very experienced with, you know, we're at school.
We have asked and.
Will they can direct us to someone?
Yeah, I really, I don't know if it's something that they have like, like they have someone that does like the parent outreach outreach, but we may be able to put something together or we may be able to invite some parents. When we get to the part, this grant is implementation.
Right.
So that's basically all it's for.
It's the after, like the next phase of that.
So, yeah, so during this phase, maybe we could get some stakeholders in.
Okay. I know that I've heard conversations about that.
And then we could also maybe do like, you know, one of us could do a parent night, even if we can't get amplified out, but we could.
I think anything that makes your parents become compliments of greatness is a hope they hear about it. So I think that would be really great. So thank you so much. Okay, so I think any other questions? So it looks like we have the codes there, the cost centers. I think we have to, we have to accept an allocate. And I just want to make sure, I think it was allocated to service costs that we need to do. Is there a certain place of the money? This is a question. There the grant, there are certain cost center that all of these are going to, I know that happened before where they all went to like instructional or something. Is there a particular cost center that these go to? Or do they all work different places? I guess the nutrition. You know.
Wait, you want to mute yourself?
So you know what? Do you, do you happen to know what cost centers these grants will be allocated to? I remember that was part of, we would have accepted allocated. But I don't know if they are all going to the same. I guess not because nutrition would be someplace different.
What cost centers are going to?
Yeah.
Um, let me look here.
Let me go back to it, maybe.
Well, two thousand is instructional. Well, two thousand is instructional, three thousand are other school services. Those are really the only cost center places where it would seem to make sense. So the my cap. The high quality instructional materials. Uh, let me get back to the big man. That would be the two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, me too. All right.
So the high, the high quality instructional materials would be two thousand. School nutritional equipment. Um. Would probably be four thousand.
Four thousand. Yeah.
Okay.
And. What is my, what is my cap?
It would be two thousand. It's all starting.
Okay.
Two thousand?
Yeah.
Instructional?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you very much. Right, so two thousand instructional and three thousand is for the. One thousand nutrition. I think that we accept and allocate. Grant, uh, for my cap, five, five eighty, the amount of nine thousand dollars. And the high quality instruction materials. Grant for blind. Twenty five, nine thousand dollars and allocate goes to. To cost center two thousand. And except. Nutrition. School nutrition assistance grant on seven to be seven. Uh, the amount of twenty thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars. Cost of the cost of their fee that was. Uh, and I think that my app was one hundred five hundred.
Oh, when, when you thought that?
Five ninety eight, five hundred, five ninety eight. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor? Right? Motion carries.
Oh. Get back to that. We're not going to spend the time despite our budget. There's been like the new budget. I think conversation, Brad, I think that will continue. So we have. Principal Bart from following us. These hat from Fowler and assistant principal Snyder, who I think is online. And. And from Green Meadow, we have principal, assistant principal, and I was going to go through. All of them.
Yeah. Best, I'm sorry. Like, it can eat to our sleep. So as soon as I'm like, it did not sound right.
Oh. Uh, just.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Rule. I'm the principal of the Green Meadow School. I want to thank everybody for having us here tonight. Want to thank anybody that's out in the TV world there, also enjoying, enjoying us tonight. The story of our literacy program began two thousand and twenty one when Mr. Brown. In a large. Part of this in order to. Work with vendors in order to get in materials here, of which we formed a committee of over fifteen. Teachers and staff members from Green Meadow in Fowler School, they looked over those programs. Hat was a large department. The year following. The Slinkquist came on, we begin a pilot program for materials. And then, of course, Mr. Snyder has now appointed us. This past year in background in the area of literacy. So this is a, an explanation, or just a quick review of where we are now. In two thousand and twenty three. So the state, the statement of impact is the proposed recommendations that you're going to hear for data analysis and professional development. In the benefit of having strengthening our core literacy instruction pre K through eight. The use of comprehensive data analysis, which has been done, will contribute to the overall goal of creating a strong foundation of early literacy skills. For all of our elementary and middle level students. Professional development, as we all know, is an ongoing multi-year process and assessment, data analysis, and instructional strategies that create a comprehensive literacy program. Green Meadow Comprehensive Literacy Program is, it is centered around quality literature decodable text. Foundational literacy skills are taught through a variety of interactive child-centered instructional methods. It includes phonics, sound symbol correspondence. Strategies for word solving, fluency and comprehension. Teach them to use the structures, read aloud, shared reading, small group instruction in a reading workshop model. To teach and reinforce these skills with a focus on science of reading. Best practices. I'll turn the next slide over to me.
Um, so for grades, um, six to eight, Rob kind of spoke about, um, three to five. The lessons are built upon the foundational skills learned in grades prepaid through five. Students work with grade level complex literary, literary and informational texts. That teach a key vocabulary and academic language. Engaging lessons help students to build background knowledge, incorporate analysis and evidence in integrated reading, writing and discussion activities. The data gathered by embedded assessments help teachers to determine students' individual strengths and challenges. And assist in guiding ongoing instruction. So it's really built upon. The foundations.
All right. Um. So. And yet we talked a lot last year about our behavior to curriculum and keeping our structures that we knew were child-centered, child-focused. We're really spending time on what. Um, when people refer to shifting the balance to include best practices from the science of reading research that is not. It's actually been around for a decade. Uh, but that is now getting a lot more attention as it should be getting attention. So we've spent a lot of time on professional development as a staff at Green Meadow, really. Um, focusing on how to infuse those science of reading best practices into structures that our teachers and our students are familiar with. Uh, with many lessons that we were keeping short because it fits their development, it's in their attention span. Uh, and finding ways to weave in our skills. Throughout the day for students so that it's not a one and done. We're really spending a lot of time on. Building your skills. So we are doing our reading mini lessons, ten minute lesson that focuses on genre and craft, which was definitely a component that was lacking in our curriculum. Um, until last year, shared reading, we actually did professional development in the fall around share reading and woven into interactive writing. So that we can be developed with decoding skills, working out orthographic mapping, really focusing on how to transfer phonics instruction and apply it in a moment to the reading that students are doing. Um, shared reading is also an opportunity for us to develop fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. It's a five day plan. There are teachers are revisiting a text. Um, they're doing warmups with decodable texts. They are, um, working on standard text as well. They sort of vary it. Um, across their five day plans. So then kids are going to block exposure, really transferring those skills. Interactive reading lab really focuses on comprehension on, on student language and helping them develop their oral language skills, which we know. Is so important to their success with actual reading. Uh, and even awareness instruction is happening in our preschool through grade one, the hybrid program. Phonics instruction continues with foundations and pre K through three this year, although next year will transition fully to, um. A phonics program embedded in CKLA. We kept foundations this year as we were adopting CKLA because we knew the implementation process would take a little while. We just wanted to ensure that our students were getting the phonics skills that they needed. While teachers were getting familiar with this. CKLA materials. And then, um, small group instruction focusing on working out quick mapping, oral fluency and decoding text. This year we implemented early bird in grade one as well. And so we'll be talking about that with our assessment. And so we've been using a lot of. The data that we get from the early bird program, including our in first grade, should drive for instruction in small groups. Oh, this is me too. All right. Um, so we have been so fortunate to have in MTSS again in Green Meadow. This past year. And so these are just some of the highlights in the way that our MTSS teams really support, supporting our students in grades K through three at Green Meadow. They have been instrumental in our assessment and data analysis. So they, um, implement, they run our data assessment, uh, beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and then again at the end of the year. Um, they administer our literacy and math assessments and that MTSS staff have been helping us facilitate our data reflection and planning meetings. And then revisiting our data in planning with teachers and coaching cycles throughout the year. They're also doing progress monitoring students. Um, using double Z and other measures just to make sure that students are making progress that were for them to be. Um, they're doing small group in class instruction during a wind blocks. So they push into our K through three classrooms every day, five days a week. And they're running small groups that are, that are, um, data informed and they're working with classroom teachers to help make sure that kids are being seen. Two or three times within their, their literacy box. They're also continuing a small group pullout model for some identified students that do better when they're in wider setting. They're working on really specific skills. Um. And they, they're running a new model, the sheer lab model, they call Lexia Lab, where they're having kids come in, they're working out Lexia, but they're there to coach kids through the program, especially some of our multilingual students. And then they're also rotating through the Lexia work on the computer and small group work in that lab model. Uh. And then finally, what we're really excited about this year is they've been implementing eight week coaching cycles. So in addition to the wind blocks of time when they're pushing in five days a week. For eight weeks, they're working with grade levels. So they just wrapped up third grade kindergarten. Now they'll be starting again in grades one and two. Uh, they push in to the classrooms for that power block and an identified area that the grade level team has. Um. Specifically identified based on data, for example, kindergarten, they've been working on, they worked out, they've been at awareness, using early bird data. Earlier in the year, in second grade, they looked at. Uh, writing samples from second graders and identified some areas which they recognized that needed to strengthen second graders writing. They planned small group. Um, lessons based on the, the name of the writing group. Um, which sort of mirrors the reading room in terms of skills that have been identified that all students need to be good, successful, expressive writers. And so each time they push in, they work in small group instruction, they run it for eight weeks, they do check in points with the teachers, they're co-planning together. Um, and it's didn't work. It's been really exciting. Each grade level has had, will have two eight week cycles during this. And now I'm going to turn it over to you.
So, um, at Fowler, our MTSS team was a little bit similar. Um. They have been doing a lot of the data for us. They do assessments. Um. They've been kind of analyzing all the data and kind of. Putting it all together and sharing it with teachers. They're facilitating something this year, which has been really cool. Uh, the MCAS kind of open response practice in grade six to eight. And they're also doing it actually tomorrow in grades four and five, where they're kind of doing an MCAS practice where they guide them with a teacher, they're guiding the teachers who are guiding the students. Through the whole process of the, um, MCAS writing component. So that's been pretty, um, pretty successful. They, um, have, they're teaching a leveled topics class in grade six to eight that review, um. Different concepts based on data. So they've used a lot of data and kind of identified students that really an extra boost in different. Areas. And so it's kind of like an extension. For the grade level. Um, they've been doing some individual coaching of ELA and teacher observations and feedback. They've also kind of, uh, I've been working with, um, both Lauren and Meg around CKLA, the curriculum and implementation. Um. They've been doing data meetings to help the team and specials teachers look at the new CKLA assessments and kind of adapt their curriculum. Around, um, some of the. Gaps that we're seeing and certain strengths that, um. Get to show. So they've, they've been really perfect.
Obviously, none of this would take place if we didn't have the assessments and try to figure out what we're going to learn from them. So we began the idea of early bird, early literacy assessment. Um, that calculates potential risk for reading. Is in kindergarten, through kindergarten, and we brought it to grade one also. Uh, the program provides the recommended interventions for each of the skill categories. So it's very explicit what we do. We have our data meetings. The teachers can look at that information and go back and run their groups according to these little screens. The D R R A two reading assessment, that's a developmental reading assessment. It's a standard based assessment. That's used to measure reading accuracy, fluency and comprehension. We've gone to the dibbles eight. That's a dynamic indication of early literacy that assesses the acquisition of literacy skills, including. And then we have Lexio Learn. That is a computer adaptive research-based reading and language assessment host. So we believe between all those, we have a very good understanding where our kids are. What we need to do, you know, is work with.
That Fowler, we have, I have all the assessments or most of them that we're using there. The maze and dibbles are, um. Kind of a continuation from Green Meadow, so we can get a snapshot of kids as they kind of move up through sixth grade. Um, CKLA has some assessments embedded, so we've been using those and trying to see what the best way is to use them as a teaching tool. Um, a really kind of interesting thing that they've done this year is M class. And I know that Senora Soler shared, um. Some of her results with M class. With. Brian, um. And that's kind of, it's looking at, um, the reading skills in Spanish and in English. So we don't, we haven't really had a tool like that in the past. So they piloted this. Um, program this year and they're getting some really interesting data and they're able to correlate where these kids are because otherwise it was very difficult to see. So that's been great. Um, in grade six to eight, we have maze, um, star, which is done four to eight also. Um. And that's a computer-based program. Um. And MCAS. So we do have MCAS and looked carefully at that.
So our next steps. Um, we're very excited that our kindergarten, we've been quite a little bit sad there on this program. We've been reaching out for a couple of years from districts to other districts to verify now what they're using. Primarily, most people use foundations is a program called Phonics to Reading. That is, we're looking at it as a replacement to our foundations program, um, in the area of our kindergarten. And if it all works very well, we believe it will, we'll move on up to grade one. Um, in the year after. Decodable text for kindergarten, grade one and grade two. Then explore the pilot of a Star reading assessment, which they already do at Fowler. We're looking at bringing that into grades one through three. And then, as said, stated earlier, is we'll continue with that grade three, continue professional in differentiation of CKLA and that curve.
And basically what Rob said, we're, we just, um, received a grant for grades three through five. For it's an implementation grant, and that will be focused on, um, building teacher capacity around, um, all of the new, um, materials. I don't even remember what it said. Um, so they'll engage in professional development, um, most likely with amplified. We had, um, Charles and I met with. Okay, who's from Tennessee, as Brian mentioned, and, um, she's going, she was assigned from Desi to work with our team. So we're in the process of putting together a team of two teachers from each grade level. There's been a lot of great response that a lot of teachers want to be on this team. So that's a great problem. So that's a great problem to have. And we're going to be meeting with the consultant on the 23rd. She's coming out, she'll spend five hours with us. The following day, the 24th, she's going to do walk groups. And then she'll help us to create a plan that's very targeted on what exactly our needs are based three to five. We haven't forgotten about six to eight. The we, the grant that we received for thirty nine thousand dollars would only let us target one band of grades. So we chose three to five because it's the most teachers. I think that we may have, right? It looks like we have. And then we'll focus on six to eight of that. I think we have to use one vendor, so we'll probably amplify. And so I'm not sure exactly what it looks, it's going to look like, but it's really exciting stuff. Very, very excited part of this. So hopefully we get a lot of really good professional development and do a little bit of train the trainers. So that a lot of our team will be able to go back to their grade level teams and really, you know, keep this moving along. So it's not a one and done, we'll just build a lot of capacity with the teachers. So it's exciting.
The final information is just a summary by grade level of the curriculum framework. So the point you don't understand is that everything we do, this is our guidance. These are what we look through. This initiative for literacy is truly has been pre K through eight program all the way through. So it's been enjoyable working with the middle schoolers and we continue to do so. We know that the work is not finished. It's a continual like literacy is in general. We will, it doesn't end just after this is done. We have to continue with it in order to make it what it is. And that's, everybody's been very helpful in this. Well, thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much. I know I have some questions, but I want to go around that.
One question I have, first of all, after saying thank you, of course, is just, um, so I know you're thinking about implying this about pre K through eighth grade and how you're helping all those students. If a kid is still struggling in the eighth grade, what happens as they move into preschool? What's the plan there here to talk about how important that is? You know, I wonder what happens for those students next? I know I am taught to go high school, but I wonder.
Yeah. I think that could be one of our focuses of my cap, what, what happens when, you know, when they get to that school. I, I don't have a concern about it at preschool, but I know that that definitely could be a conversation.
And then I guess my other question is, now that you've lived this for a year plus, I'm wondering what you're noticing is working better? What you're proud of and how we're thinking right now you'll measure success for each of the students.
You know, I think Green Meadow, we see there, there's a couple of things that really stand out. One, I think with the collaboration amongst general education teachers, MTSS staff and special educators has been really rich. And I think that the work that we've done around identifying data points that are helpful to our instruction, not just data points. That's been, you know, really the driving force behind everything that we're doing. Because, you know, when we, for example, the early burn, learning data, it, it is, it's so explicit for us. And then there's been lots of professional development with early bird around great instructional practices to really support those students. It's, it has become a driving force in the conversation that our staff is talking about kids. It's really helping us focus our planning and instruction. I think it's got a real level of richness to our small group instruction. And, you know, I think we're seeing our kids grow and bounds in terms of, of what they're able to do. I think how do we measure our success? It's the way, like the smile on faces, it's the excitement, the buzz at the school and the excitement that teachers are feeling because they feel like they're making a real impact. It's the excitement that kids are feeling because they're talking about books, they're picking up books, they're feeling really proud of their success. I think, you know, that's, that's probably one of the main reasons, the major reasons that we're through checking ourselves to see if we're being successful. But it's also in the data, right? How our kids progressing since year two. I think we're really looking forward to see what the actual year data looks like because, you know, we had a lot, there was an uphill fight after COVID, a lot of kids needed a lot of really explicit instruction. So what does our data look like at the end of this year? And then what happens next year as we continue with kids that have, you know, had more consistent school, right? As our kindergartners move through, as our incoming base move through, they have a little more stability. What's the impact like?
Wanted to answer that question too, because when I came here in 2018, did you ask the teacher, what do you use to teach literacy? We'd get answers from, well, I got this from the district I came from and I brought it with me. I went on to teachers, paying teachers, I use Google. And, you know, not much, not much traction happened in those couple of years, especially when, when, when Brian came on board as our superintendent. So I think there's some, there's some serious credit deserved there where we really saw, really had this push to provide teachers, treat our teachers as professionals and give them the tools that they need to, to, to do their craft. And so this committee began and the thing that excites me the most is probably something that's taken for granted in most districts. But it's just, it is a new thing for remainder relatively. And that is walk into a teacher's classroom and they're provided the tools that they need. And that to me has been tremendous. I see it, you know, I go into classes every day and I see ELA being taught every single day and walk into a class. And I can walk into Ms. Brack's class and I can see the same content as being taught as if I walk into Ms. Bayless's class. One teacher isn't using one thing, teacher isn't using another. Everybody's on the same page and that just makes, that just gives us the wind in the back to plan together. And then the data collection, this doesn't even talk about that. That's incredibly exciting, but just providing teachers the tools they need to, to be effective is, is so, is such a big thing for me. So I think Brian.
And I just want to also add that we know is the Spanish version of the CKLA. And one of the other great parts is that they all, the Spanish version program kind of had their own, did their own thing because they didn't have the same materials. Now they're able to collaborate with their teams and the CKLA is identical to the Camino's. So the teachers are all able to collaborate. It's been really, really great for teams over there and making sure all the kids are getting the same I follow structure of materials.
Elizabeth, you, you were asking that in, there are so many things that we have problem for this last several years in order to do this. First of all, it's never done in a bad, right? It wasn't just made in public schools. We reached out to multiple school districts. We received their information. Everybody that we talked to has just been overly excited by what we and the process that we use. And we started talking about it in the early education aspects and said, we do phonetic awareness, we can phonetics, we have this, we have a read inside the classrooms. It went, wow, you have all of that. We're yes, now we have PD in order to continue on this, right? And then we took that and then we said, let's broaden it. And after working together with Fowler and Barton, working through that, our next steps are not to be satisfied. So what, what is still working, what is not working? We were missing pieces of the literacy program. It wasn't a phonetic awareness program. How come our kids weren't doing well? We were saying we had a huge gap. So you brought in Hector, right? So Hector is good for now. That doesn't mean it's going to be good forever. You got to keep looking. So foundations has been a fantastic foundation program. Now we're looking, it might be something better. So we're not dumb in the, in order to continue to do this. I think watching the teachers and they're excited by that, they're still wanting to learn. So they thank us for the curriculum, they thank us for the resources, they thank us for the training, they can bring that to the kids. That's, that's why we're very proud.
Great, thank you all.
Yeah, I'm so excited about this. It's so long, we're doing things for habits that you guys put in, everybody that was involved in it. So I know we, we hear about all the excitement, all of that, but getting the data, we've got to be looking at MCAS to say that the kids are doing that much. But how, how do we get the nuts and bolts to know that, you know, that, that we're, we're doing well as well as kids being excited?
I can just.
It's going to be.
Standard basis.
And yay.
Well, the assessment that you indicated, I'm guessing like the, the DIBLs, you know, all those, uh, yeah, those are all done. And that they're over, those are all done at certain frequencies during, you know, right? So I wonder, and I mean, this is just an educator, various kind of pointers. And is that with those measurements, you know, because we're certainly using the same ones, how are we measuring that data? Like now, what do we do last spring, you know? And then in from a numbers perspective, how do we look now? Can we get that? Is that a comparative? We could maybe, I don't know, it looks like you're running it, I don't know.
What the question? Okay. All right. And, and then that piece that I don't want to wait until the kids are in the third grade to find out. It's still two years, it's like early bird, I'm really interested. Yeah.
So one of the things that the district has now brought it together is in, right? It gives us that opportunity to take all of our data and put it in one place. And then historically look at how we're trans. Yep, that was a narrative we were missing before. All right. So people would always say, hey, there was a lot of assessments, there was no conversation about the assessments. There is no historical data. That is now something that we are now working with. And that data at some particular point, as you build a middle build, you have a comprehension, understanding of a child. Or you can take a look at them from fourth school all the way through whenever they're here. We have a meeting on a child, all that information and you can get that. One of the reasons bringing the early bird was is let's not wait until third grade end, right? Third grade end guess by that period of time, they'll get the information through fourth grade. That's fine, right? Let's find out early. And we heard from community members and teachers and elements, it's like we're waiting too long. So now we have that. And then you have the DIBLs, you have the DRAs, others. So with that is when we find a child that have a difficulty, that's when the other video aspect gets that. That's when that MTSS crew also comes in, that's where the coaching takes place. So we're, we're primed now, not only to look at how are we, but to when someone is not doing well, how are we meeting? I think that's, that's your only path here too.
Sure, something.
Yes, which is younger, as we all, it's early.
Sadly, so we talking about the MTSS staff members that have been just valuable. What are we going to do going forward? You know, money's running out and, you know, we're going to be fighting. Those people. But is there a base now so that if we're not guys in fervor, we're strong enough? That would be.
Fight, fight not to that.
So, so I'm sure Mike has a lot to say about MTSS. And in what is, is it going to, is it going to be helpful? Yes. Well, I, I would mind you, they are a huge strength to what we do. We knew this going into the, we're in a short time period. Their benefits have been in coaching with our staff members, that is part of the idea is to bring that to the teachers and help them with their skill sets and work there. Are we totally there? No. Are we better? Yes. When we went into this, we, I, I said it's a five year process in order to be able to do this. In order to get us moving once, we're already being on when we started. So you weren't going to catch up in two years. So our hope is that as we continue on with is what have we learned while the MTSS is here? What can we use with it? With it, a lot of that also goes, the teachers have become better equipped to, to analyze data and use that data.
That's something that you mentioned earlier, that access by teachers.
Yes. Yeah.
So like if they have retrieved the shape from the third grade.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Something they can see right away then.
Exactly. Exactly. So we're, we're working some measured barrier in order to do that. Are you going to be able to just say that it's not going to have any of that? That's not true. It is. We continue to do what's best.
The only thing I want to add to that is that we are, our MTSS teachers at Fowler are really trying to teach and empower our teacher leaders. We receive a stipend for that, for that role. Children are some of that, a little bit of leading, being more instructional leaders on their teams and not just like conduits of, of communication from the principal's office to their teams, but more, more instructional areas of the teams. So.
And just a segue on that. So this wonderful staff that we have in place now, we know that sometimes we teach people, sometimes we bring on new. So how are the new people going to be indoctrinated into this whole exciting?
Yes. Well, I think some of the, some of the people that we pulled into Green Meadow this year, and I think CKLA as well. The, the idea is that it continues year after year. So for example, the early bird professional development that happened at the beginning of the year, middle of the year and end of the year. It's built into our contract with them. And so that professional development about how to look at the data, but also what's new in terms of instructional practices. Or, you know, there's ongoing research, early bird was created in part with Gab and she was a researcher in dyslexia. And so they're constantly adding more information to their sites. And so we do that, that piece will continue. CKLA because of the work that's been done in East Charles and getting the grant, that PD will continue. And as we empower team leaders, they continue that work as well. But I invite you all to come to Green Meadow and come see what's going on.
Well, I'm glad you're already here. It's really. Is there, um, the heels of Mary's concern about the funding? Because I think, I think that to that point, this has been stupid, analyzing where we were. And, you know, and then getting everyone on board. And I think that getting teachers all together, it's been really fantastic to see all the letters that come out and how much staff are just really excited to hand those two are really having the knowledge to, 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 to do that. I am worried as well that, you know, we, we were getting to a place where like see, you know, and then what, what happened? So are there any competitive brands that for the MTSS? I don't know, Charles, I know Charles is like a magician, um, special projects, but I don't know if there's any competitive rights. It might be able to.
We're, you know, we're not going to be able to replace that. But there'll be parts of things we really working, Chuck and I are really working on the collaboration with Prince, the Black Book of Labor, the classes, seeing itself there. And stuff, some of that, it may be only five thousand dollars, there's six thousand dollars here that, you know, that is not so. We're already starting to think, because we don't know yet what we're getting in our pedal. June, we'll be together for this. And we're, we're, we're scouring every competitor brand. So.
I mean, there's so much.
So we're hoping, you know, hoping that some, but I, I don't want to ever think of it as a replacement. But we are going to, just today about, I had a very conversation about some of the fantastic people that wanted that. And just a really fantastic, I'll see you at two hundred dollars, just little bits to, to, to fund things that are very successful. And that, and that's something when we talk about the teachers coming in, it's a culture there that they compare. I think that's so important.
It is that the MTSS, which is, I just, you're, and I've been going back to you. So I feel like that's going to strengthen the grade level teams as well.
So just, just one last, as I said. One last thing, the frameworks at the end, do parents get that? Parents get what the framework is for their student? If our parent, I was bummed still, like, what is the expectation? You have like a triangle. Curriculum that following.
Those frameworks are hundreds of pages. What's better, I think for a parent is more of a one page, you're like, what's the focus of grades four? What's the focus of grade five? What, what does the student need to know to be successful for grade five? What is coming after grade five? And they, they made some of those sheets, which I think are really easy to digest. And they they made some of those sheets, which I think are really easy to digest for.
What's. Your hands down.
Wow. Um, uh, just quick, uh, I was, I'm glad to hear about the, he knows, that's great. Uh, is there, is there other stuff? Excuse me. There other other stuff? Um, that you're seeing for yellow students that you're seeing like that? They're also getting a lot out of this.
But one of the reasons that we're really interested in the phonics to from phonics to reading program, which was. Uh, authored by Wyland Levens, who has done a ton of research around the native phonetic. Awareness and instruction pedagogy is that it has really strong component for supporting multilingual students. And so it's embedded in the curriculum, there's lots of um. Where can be shared with our L teachers, our general education teachers. Um, it it's it's one of the reasons that we're really interested. Knowing that that's an area that we've been to get better.
We have a very strong L program and people who brought the L program. Had a passion for it, um, so it's been fantastic. And they're very much with each other, they help each other too. Um, but I would say is that we also have a program that's onto the move, we have a national geographic program. That is one for them, that is a great folder, yes, for those students as they went to learn the language. So there's another aspect that we got.
Have to be back that. Students. To that.
Great. Um, and just one last question. Just wondering. Um. When we might be able to see the the. The results.
We're probably looking more towards May, um, just so that we will have. Uh, variety once. Uh, for, yeah, so, yeah, so with ours, I should just say in order to say it's like, so we wait to that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, just on the the data information, I know. I think that we belong to get that information to look really great to look at what we have available for us to the other. There are lots of analysis that we. Next to, you know, achievement and improvement. Uh, that the staff have really got. Have more hand in and. Versus a standardized. You know, test, uh, but also it will speak to our historical, you know, for a particular program that. So where if you can, uh. We can get something like that or even if it just like updating a letter or whatever, that'd be, you know. Nothing that needs a presentation, but I I think that starting off would be really great to see how we're how we're. As opposed to waiting for MCAS information. Um. And we uh. Did have a question about. Obviously, the knowledge and the organization, where are? Uh, where, how does that play in what I in elementary, I have to know that that some of that keeps coming up.
Yes, yes, and I just understand that there's, you know, it always.
So the least random, I can't remember, the statistics now are this kind of new reading, like lessons about genre.
And to be honest, it's the best that's out there.
Okay. Yeah. And is that something that you will imagine for team like, um, bro? If you're. Or it's not gonna be like one nation, the right force of that.
Right, the ten minute, the ten minute lesson about genre, it's really, it's very separate, right? We're teaching students an overview about um. Different genres, that there is informational text. And what they might expect when they open informational past. You know, teaches them features of text about um. How to how to scan the text for information, it's like those. Uh, sort of big picture skills that a child. Before entering into a task, it doesn't talk about strategies, it doesn't talk about, um. It's it's not connected to the font that they're doing, it's just a big picture about. Both focuses on um the difference between realistic fiction and fantasy, it talks about. Um, people, what is the cable exactly, just so they can. Understand those those big ideas about. Books.
When we um. Look at our, look at our, I know the science of reading, right, so that's how does that fit into? A larger mission of wanting to focus more on science of reading? When that's more of a balanced literacy approach?
It, but it's not about. Uh, reading background knowledge, it's about how it works for them. So it's, even though it has been offered by, it's not a balanced literacy approach, it's reject. Confusing kids with background knowledge about how different kinds of texts work and what they're gonna find in it, both of those books. There is a many lessons component to CKLA, it's just not called reading mini lessons, it's just embedded in the work.
And and is there a reason why we wouldn't do that instead? Because I know.
We didn't go with.
Yeah, so like you, like Carrie, Jesse, like one of the. Sure, um, you know, CKLA is obviously something that has been recommended where.
So. Right, please just keep in mind that the fact I'm putting down many lessons is ten minutes a day. It is not the big, it it is not our overarching program, it's not our our. Pedagogy, it's not our philosophy behind reading instruction, it's ten minutes. We did not opt to go with CKLA for our kindergarten, first and second graders, because it was still sixteen to nineteen minute. Lesson that just felt developmentally. Not appropriate for our, especially kids that were coming from school after COVID pandemic, where they even needed to learn. How to be in the classroom, and then ultimately we felt that small room instruction was the best. Way to address what their needs were, and there's not room for that CKLA. So that is really the driving that um that is.
Like, very recommended that adds those.
Some facts to reading.
Yeah, so so we piece it together, Natasha is what we've done, right? So integrity is a lot of part of science to read. Phonics to read for for our clients, it's going to be a a lot of science for reading. And but then we take a look at the idea of having um. Shared read. And that's an area of what the students need to understand, being good. They can have other aspects of independent reading, when the kid, not all kids are the exact same way. Right? So when we talk about a comprehensive literacy program, we could, we could say this is thousand twenty one. And we're going to say this is the the. Minor parts that we put together is better than anyone whole book.
And I will give credit that here, you know, balance better than where we were. I always questioned just kind of that. Approach, I think there's been some research to say that sometimes having that, and it's hard to sometimes have the data that. Yeah. Follows that, which is what wrong with my earlier questions about? How are we measuring success? Because especially in the early, the earlier years, don't have. A core curriculum, we have uh. Supplemental, you know, the phonics are not like the CKLA or whatever, and that's the part that I think. Would be helpful for parents to understand, especially, we had the message we wanted to convey, how is it that our approach is comprehensive? That you're very firm and confident in? Let's see the data that we implemented that and show us how that's good, because I think that's. Like, just what we.
I make everybody feel almost happy. You know, I don't know if this came up at an earlier, but Jennifer Ronte arranged a meeting for Rob and I, who's. Facting mine. With that, but we sat down, we went through our K through two comprehensive literacy program, curriculum we were using, we had restructuring the day. And her feedback was fantastic, so you know, her her only recommendation to us is. Getting it down on paper.
That's it, we're making sure you did something that you can do start, right? It's. They have, but they have no, what that.
Absolutely, but the feedback was really fantastic, so you know, I think it took it took her towards getting it down on paper. But it is, it is a solid. Pedagogical approach, we are helping it to. I I. I don't necessarily believe that in our younger, either our younger grade. One curriculum per se is always the best answer. But I think when we get them to where they need to be, and they get to the third grade, they're ready to go because they've got those foundational skills.
Those assessments that are kind of also. Whatever, but you know. Kind of looking at that, not giving us better guidance on, is that approach to preserve your score? And more direct to ask for, so anyway, I just.
We appreciate.
Um, you know, it's conversation now, I know, I'm so excited, everyone's excited. So.
And again, please comment, right? I mean, I think it's it's a pay per do, it's just really helpful to have. More of an individualized approach to literacy development, using data, right? Not just taking doubts in the dark, but really grounding it in evidence. Uh, because then we can really tailor to our students specifically needs to get them to the place where. Then a larger curriculum, there are entry points for all of them. That's, that's our goal, thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay. I I have my breath. A teacher was borrow.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Accidents. Thank you so much. Like, everybody.
Nice, uh, so we're gonna do one that and the job descriptions, um, and I think. I know. The personnel subcommittee. Have been vetted through all the stakeholders, they like was um. There's not, they're just gonna be brought up to, you can probably look at the the old version and then see there's probably eighteen sixties. Um. And so, yeah, yeah, I think this is just a matter of us approving um. Being updated, yeah. Comments. That, do you have? Go down. Okay. We have the head coach and the assistant. Okay, so. The head coach was that, oh, was it assistant coach, sorry. Um. Just uh under, and you guys can see this as the comment, but duties and responsibilities, I just said. Under the head coach is the assistant, sorry, this is. Uh, assistant. Assistant. Okay, my assistant coach. Yes, because there's that side of it, that, you know, the students have to stay. Have a GPA of a certain level, whether they need to play, or I just think coaches play such an important role. In students also staying academically. Um.
I mean, you can take it back to me, I'm not real. Given that it's really fun. This table. So. I had something to. Yeah, I can send it back.
I wonder if it might be just something about, like, just uh. People want to policy because I. Say, I I'm curious, I don't want to outline exactly like what it would be, but. There might be, so I think there's like, no. You're, you know, just maybe, um. I thought that would be something simple like that versus this one. Um, and then the only other one was, it was actually taken from the head coach, and I just added two bullets from the head coach to the assistant coach. Attend to all teen events, and turn off the maybe by teen coaches. We'd see as though that played into assistant coaches as well as the head coach. And then the next bullet was actively participating in all that. Put to me. It doesn't. They don't always. The wall, so we want. So it's just not. A little bit of.
Oh, yeah.
That's why it is.
Okay, that's everything that we're seeing.
A little bit of.
What you think I just. You want to have. For training. Our assistant coach will activate them. Then we just saw the plan, but we came up with one. Two.
That could be helpful, that's okay, and they do, they do do that.
Right, that's. It's important piece, they make. Overall success. That makes sense, well, so I just, so at the end of that paragraph, let's say, and policies pertaining to academic. Questions. Yeah, thank you, that was, that was good. So, uh, and then they, um, they do certification. Uh, so then you put that on assistant. Right, well. That was something I would love to be sharing. Yes, exactly. So that doesn't. It's just.
Uh, has to be a teacher.
Oh, yeah, that's in the, that's in the.
So it is true that if two people are equally qualified, the teacher gets it, but it's not the teacher. Certainly something over.
Correct, it's it's the call for the coaching position. So it looks like. Right now. We'd be adding um. References to policies. Or ensuring. Okay.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, but.
Now, I think that's simple enough, where it doesn't change the nature of the job, that's just something that everyone has to do. Policy, so. And it kind of gets more targeted, I think, to what we were, like, highlighted a little bit. That's up, that work we, of course, we make. Mark, I think they have. No. And that little snippet on both of the, I added to the notes, so I would make sure that's the final. So then, um, I will make a motion. Who? To eat a job descriptions for work. Head coach. And the assistant coach. Did edit both to. Times with policies pertaining to academic requirements. That we. Need further discussion. Okay, all in favor? Okay, uh, now. The article. Discussion. Or. Um. Uh, so just to kind of catch everyone's speed, uh, we circulated the article, basically. It was language that we had, some of them looked up in another tab and. Uh, legal had uh. Provided some guidance to make sure that. Or in their opinion, uh, what would. For major charter. Which does ask for a most. Funding source. And uh, legal counsel felt that. Uh. That provided multiple. Sufficiency. So we're not eliminating any other potential opportunities. To do that. Right now, from a timeline perspective. We, uh, I submitted over, do you need to vote on tonight? There's a deadline for sixty days before, which is next, the fifteenth. Which is when we have. But I did, uh. I asked. Right, I sent an email today, it would become in the stuff that will be told, we can tell council to wait, you know, but I wasn't clear if that had been done already. Or where that was, so I sent the email today, asking if that happened, if it happened, and I think we both kind of like. He thought he was waiting for us to get a vote, it says, no, please, just go ahead and start. Start that, um, which they do have town council review, it is rather fine, but it's. How to do that, if they do, could you draft? Also. I did ask that that happened. Uh, and so we can, you know, we may have to be back, so with that in mind. With the idea of. Uh, deadline approaching. Uh, I did have a motion drafted on what we could do. But in the event that, and I did also, uh. Email our legal counsel again, just to say, okay, just because, you know. Is there anything like, can we have town council reach out to you, there's questions, you know, how how then, like, it is a work. To communicate, I haven't heard that. Sarah, yeah. Uh, about about that, and I did ask other questions, like, is there any other language that might be, you know. More grounded in a legal interpretation? That would be uh. Forced out, so. Um. It wasn't really. Talk about very uh formally, because in the board meeting, or at the bunch. Yeah, well, it was also very surprising, right? I think the the part that was, that we, this was an. I think the, the part that was, that we, this was a new conversation we had, we actually talked about it a couple of times in our, in our meeting, we talked about the budget. We went, uh, for, you know, like, what are, what do we want to do? And, uh, it didn't seem like it had gotten through whatever conversations, it's, I. I don't know, there was maybe a hope that, but you know, see. And I don't know, like, I want to speak myself, but I don't think any of us really feel this is a, now that we. To do necessarily, it's almost as if. Have no other choice, because it's not sustainable, especially with Greg saying the other night, uh, should be expected two point five percent every year, that's what he said. And I just don't see how we, and it's not just the school, it's a town issue, you know, uh. There's a lot of town leaders have stuff going on. So it's not just school, I, I was only to advocate for the school's point, but I'm not. Not even. Specific overall time, so, you know, maybe it'll spark a right conversation that really. To happen, maybe it will be something that. Can look at all these projects that we never get to do as a town, you know, that, that might be part of it, um, I don't know. But either way, for our purposes here and just. Well, on it, uh, I did want to ask if it was okay with you all. Uh. If for some reason, Lee comes back and says, no, we wouldn't be scheduled with fifteen. If you would authorize me to then, oh, at least on legal guidance, whenever I think about town council or Sarah. To amend the article, um. And I'll circulate it all, but would you override the change in, um, basically, if I had, if we submitted it to.
So we'll vote on this.
Right, right, so. This one, and then, you know, if for some reason tomorrow or town council, or one day. You know, oh, you know, go like this, we're instead of getting us all to be, um, you know, I can, you know. Take whatever is suggested or whatever, try to amend it and get it in. To that side.
So that's why the motion there.
Yeah, yeah, I tried to see if, if, but if everyone's not comfortable with that, then I, you know, just wanted to kind of, it's a side deal, but I also recognize that. I'm sure people would really like that the, the articles down, not from legal requirements of some sort, and. Um, and, you know. I, okay. Any, uh, any questions about, I know I've sent, you know, the emails, we've got conversations, but how do you feel about this approach?
Like you said, it's. Very much based on this already.
You know, absolutely the same. And my hope is that the eleven thou, that money can say something. That we can. Don't have to look on this, but.
And I did, you know, just actually there were, there are, so I did also ask about the drawing, you know, if in the event that something, you know, better state funding or something to that effect. You know, through. What, that mechanism to withdraw. Article, um. Because like, previous. Town things. Other, other people, you know, like. Have withdrawn stuff before, not that day, but before. Just even. I think there is, but I mean, I, I think I shared, you know, Dick had said, like, there was something in the data, but I, I, I wanted to look and see, because we're just. You know, right, I just want to make sure that we get everything right, so, uh. So that, you know, we need to back or, uh, with withdrawing, that is a possibility, um, the other possibility, which is a, a real. Reality is that if, if the article passes at town meeting. Um, the budget would be potentially out of balance. Uh, which is allowable up until they set the tax rates and the law, so that couldn't, that. Be within that window, maybe revenue things looking, or maybe expenses of that sometime. Uh, or it gives time for planning for a run. Uh, Mater hasn't, I think it's been twenty years, someone was saying, it's been twenty years since they've ever done it over, which is actually very. From outside of. What a lot of other towns do, because, uh. Two and a half percent is not sustainable for, for expenses, for any, many. So I, I asked, asked if it just sent over there, or they, I think, I think their operating budget is going up like twelve or fourteen percent. And we are, our contribution is going up six percent, or six to seven percent for that. So I don't think it's unreasonable that, you know, we're saying our expenses are going up two and a half, uh. At, at more than two and a half percent is, is, uh, so. And I did actually have a couple of responses that I had got back, uh. That survey that I've done, uh. And just I asked people about what, what are the percentages, they have four point seventeen percent, eight percent, six point one percent, three point seven five percent, and no than two point five percent. Now, that, that's. Those are percentages that they asked for, or that they're getting. These are conversations of what they, uh, they were seeking over their, so, okay, we, no, I don't know, anyone knows right now. All forgetting, but to go ask eight percent, you know, six percent, um, and I think the numbers that came back recently. It came out to level service was about, was it four and a half percent or, or, uh, over what was allocated. For last year is five three four, right? Four percent, yeah. So was, was the ask or the level service, there was two. The other thing I wanted to just confirm, uh, was the number on the article. Cause I, I just submitted a presentation, I just wanted to, uh. When we had submitted the, uh. Okay. So it was, uh, there was a, not a digital, out of the slides of the presentation had, I think it was the chart, and brought me to like, look through this, uh. Read the bar, what the output of service, there is one number in it, you know, last page is five, so I just, I pulled the number from. That was, uh. It, it's the. Talking about the five. First line. Let's see. Right here, it says twenty two million, seven hundred and four thousand. Five hundred and seventy seven dollars, then when I went to. That usually gives us. Here, I guess, two, twenty two, like, level service, that was twenty two million, seven hundred. Five. I. Booked the number above, I think it was seven. Seven hundred and four hundred and fifty, so there was a table, um. Okay, but I think what, what we, uh. For the accompaniments, for the appendix. But your permission. And to have to do the sponsor comments, sponsor comments can be submitted afterwards, it's not a requirement that is served or something, I think we all agree that needs to happen. Uh, so I think, oh. Now that I, the, the mental stuff, because the fires, um, in the article. I can start working on it, so there are lots of things with that, I think we want to get it out to the public as well. And get our, our best. Okay, so you're saying that we're going with the twenty two, seven forty five, seven forty four. Yeah, because I, right, because I think that's, I think that's the type of presentation, which, yeah. Right, because if you look at the first slide, it writes seven, and I think the seven four was one of the I O version as well. Here it says, like, here it says seven forty five. Or it could be. Yeah, great. Alright, so. So. I have a motion, that's okay, I'll make it, uh. I will make a motion that, uh, endorse the draft, which are sponsored by the school committee for the other. Full time. To town vote, raise appropriate or transferred from general stabilization or other available funds to treasury. But, uh, twenty two million, seven hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seven, seven dollars. For the level service operating expenses of the, of the school department for this year. For, and authorize a chair to amend article necessary to.
But you'll get us, you may.
I just, it's just, I mean, I could, you could schedule a meeting right away, I don't. That's okay. I would definitely make sure anything that I get. Trying to ensure that as quickly as I can get it. So, uh, is any other, any discussion, no? Brian, anything for you? I, 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 I live here, you're not. Uh, yes, and I will, uh, this evening, I will be in the house, that will work, and to all the other folks that. Will. Uh, yes, I will too, uh. Time. This is where we go, um. Um, they, yeah, total. So I think that will. Alright. Uh, they in all favor? Okay, machine Harris. Yeah. Uh. Protocols. I don't think we've been told, this is fine, this is, I was hoping to, but I know there was a couple of questions and, uh.
And it was a first reading, so I'd like.
Yeah, and then you're always on here again today either, so I, I, but it was helpful that, um, Aron and Smith for. You know, kind of speaking, so hopefully. We'll be able to be, but on it, do we want to just table this? I have one thing I want to say though, but it's, I wanted to make sure the, the way it was framed. Uh. This was. Supposed to be something for the superintendents. And the school, maybe like a joint, you know, our group all together, but when I. And I didn't think about it the day. Back, and we start changing it from like school to me, it kind of changes the, like, he's maybe not speaking to all that. And I, I wasn't, okay.
Well, I'm curious about that part, because there's only one thing, there's two things, I think that the, the most thing is, the superintendent will be visible in the community. And then this.
Well, no, 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 right. Yeah, but we.
I took it out.
Like stuck in there. Yeah, I know, I was thinking the same thing.
My actual question is, do we need to have answer written on it? And it's just, it's just like the protocol for us.
Well, no, because we did add school superintendent's under. Recognize.
Yeah, I know that, oh, where is that, which?
That's under meeting member application, there's the. Patient. No surprise, like, all of that, there's first important things in there that was. But I do think it's important, I know that's quite. And I know the protocols, the template that they gave, they had some, yeah. Yeah, so that's where I just thought that. Through that lens, if we're gonna say, like, we might need to find, you know, but maybe not. How is that representative of the school and the superintendent, or is that. You know, actually revert back to the school, I mean, and some of those. That are specific to, like, our member, you know, that have member relationships.
You all just go back.
Yeah, yeah.
Back.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was my. And then there was a couple of comments, and I felt one of my. Anyway, that was it. So, I mean, you know, something. Are we, are we good?
I'd like to take another look at it, you know, so that's, that's, I'll take another look and see what we try and try.
Yeah.
Okay, this is something that. All about my years. Mayor next. So it just, you know, I mean. I think. I. Idea would be that. Every year, this would be something to go. Sets a good break for. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll bring it our next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's good, but there's some places that we've worked. You know, like, like number two. Says B, used to be the school committee, but it was changed to B, so we've over percent. All students in the district. I don't, maybe they use, is good then.
Right, I think the part that I, I was fine with that, it's like, that's the part, remember.
No, so I'm just saying that I think it's important that we look at it and then, or just a little more. Thoughtful about.
Making. So. Alright, uh, policies. Now, this is our first three. Give me two. At the bucket, uh. And you know, I was, wanted to mention, uh. For the last two years, I, I think we're getting, uh. Techless, like, that helps us kind of. Plan, like, all bits of brand. Uh, I wonder if something like that be at this dependence to. The. What do you think? Like, you know, I assume doing like that draft or document has different, like, you know, wrote by this, just kind of like lays out your. Coming up with different, uh, milestones that need to happen for the. Here, I think that would be more for. Budget.
Instead of general questions, because again, this is the first read, uh, did. Was this taken from that, is that, yeah, pretty much, so it's pretty much the, yeah, yes, stable now, yeah. So, yeah, so I'd like the opportunity to go through. I mean, if mass things. Which take all. Yeah, this is.
No, it, um. No, I think that we're, we're all, we're upset, but.
I think they were pretty straightforward, right?
And these were the updated versions, right, they just had a new setup, financial.
Yeah, they were all updated, um, earlier, yeah, two thousand twenty two, yeah. And I just got a thing. The basis of.
And I think about the policy, it's just.
Yeah. Detail that they updated a whole bunch more, and I think that some of these, some of the ones that we are either doing or didn't do. Also, I have to read it again, so I'm just like.
See, I think that's where I'll provide the template, that, because it's like, that's in the game, it's a budget, uh, deadline schedule. It just says about calendar preparation, like, we work at first for top.
Oh, right, right, yeah, right.
And X ray, like, I should have noted with the charter, things that. Okay. Okay, awesome, I'm gonna work for you, okay, thank you. Right. Um, so if any, anybody else would be feedback, it sounds like we just put some. Of guys meeting. Before the next school, we are a. Not. Three, not support, yeah, three weeks, so before the, the. First April one, I think. Maybe. For our next meeting in March.
Well, and you're meeting, we're meeting on the twenty eighth, so you can hear the twenty third, and then policy is the twenty eighth, and then. The sixth. The sixth, you may not.
Okay, so maybe we give the feedback at this meeting.
Yeah, I can take that on.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, we'll do like a second read and then we'll quote it at a better time, okay, okay. There. I'm trying to make any of the policies to. Chair report, uh. I just wanted to, first, since we're talking about budget, is to. Um, our budget period. And, uh, which will be coming up. Heard that. It's two weeks prior, or what do we require the papers with, two weeks, to ensure it gets into the paper. Uh, my goal is the week of twenty, like that, and that we need to get it for the action of women. And they, they. Yeah. So they do own notice is very generic. Right. Right, we don't have. Second, don't even agenda, we just. Right, and you're not going to display two days, uh, correct, or you just need to make sure it's. And I think, uh, talk about. I know when a budget is up, but, uh, given that we're gonna be asking. Of the service role that would be for a public hearing. Voting on budget for that slow service as well. And that would be diverse, we, 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 so like all of us. Service. I think that presentation, maybe mixed with the one that we have, so first, that will be looked at. Uh, anything else we could think about for? Do you want it in this room? Do you want it in assembly hall? I know in past way that we were all, oh, and it was in the assembly hall for large crowd, as expected. But that's. Since people can zoom in, I'm gonna talk, that's true, I don't think we get a lot of crap for an experience. And if we're going to be seeing the hybrid format, this would probably be much better than we said we had, couldn't post it soon. Yeah, I mean, it would be great to, if no one, it's one week. If this lasts well, and, you know. Yeah, because last night, since the meeting worked really well, we had forty-four people that were on Zoom, because they were, so, but we want to get a bigger audience, because. Was there, oh, yeah, maybe, I mean, I would say, since we're gonna do that. Yeah, just kind of standing there and, uh. My direct. Yeah, yeah. I, and, and, uh, you know, in previous years. They can get that if, if needed, so it's not like. Yeah, cheers, yeah, yeah, so more of this, the, so just a legend after, like. Oh, okay, oh, when, when every year, so, yeah, so, uh, April, that April sixth date that we were gonna have it here, and then we're gonna vote on. On the twelfth step, the subsequent meeting, but you're not here, so, uh. Welcome to you, sweetheart, it's important to be here. Following. Well, then twenty-seven, uh, but then we get close to annual term, and. I'm happy to, to take a look. That program, if you, I think that. Okay, well, remember, this is the sixth, we're only gonna hear the first, we're not voting for the sixth, we're only gonna have the next, so, yeah, I have the video. So we'll have a public hearing, um, sixth at, um. Then it's for a presentation. So we will. Have a deal. Have a deal on the website and offer the public, like, the fourth perspective. So the hearing notice will have a bit. Any, any other questions about the public hearing? Outreach efforts, thank you for getting.
Go, you will.
So, uh, we sort of started, I feel we have.
Yeah, well, the thing we have most, the soonest is the library's, uh, that they're having, hoping, and that's, I mean, that's next weekend.
Yes.
And so we need to figure out who's going to that, and that's just gonna work, I said, I forward you that, that we, um, the library that. This is around that hour, um, so we should probably talk about that, that's.
Yeah, so, um. I know, Mary, you, your, well, I, I, yeah, I, um, what I ask is, I also signed this up for the green medal. And I, and so they were gonna be like the representative for us, so you can share a six-foot table, so I thought, and I wasn't too early, I was gonna, I'm trying to get, um, somebody from. The, um, the building committee to join me, but, uh, so I asked Sally, Sally, are you, if, if we could have school committee and the building. Together at that table, and then I'll be at the next table with the food pantry and Ed Bonding's next door, and I asked if we could all be together.
So you just need to.
There's gonna be a turnout of people, there's so many great, so many stations that are gonna be there, um, I, I go, I think, yeah, right, yeah, I can go, um, and I, I think just invite, or just all the other happenings that. Whatever, I think Justine is gonna speak to the company too, with the building.
Do you have any other major, tell me anything for the school committee that was like. When major is like, this will, you know, like, if our own is with us, that.
So what is, is we have a quick turnaround, so. To, we copy another district. One thing is to have something in front that says, leave a tool committee, you know, so, right.
Right, that's the thing, I thought would be kind of nice to have. Right, just to then bring that maybe, yeah, something that, you know, some, our email that. Things that we're thinking about, your calls.
Yeah, I was just more thinking, it's just gonna be sort of, you know. Thinking about this, but you're right, Kevin, something. It's not just like, Mary, I'm just standing here, I'm waiting to be well. We have recently. Uh, I mean, I, I've been doing a lot of this, which is gonna be working. I know you guys have something for the, uh, the meat, but that, you know, a table.
Yes, you're scared, right.
Well, as I said, we have like a, that's official, like, your school, you know, or maybe even call it school that we could, you know, put. Um, so, I don't know, I have one round, let's see. Yeah, may I become my father, what do you?
So you're concerned, you're gonna be the library?
I can, I'll take the library, yes, yeah, yeah, we make it kind of, yeah, so we, we would just.
So you, like, I can, I can, I have a question, that's what people think, but I can pop in.
Yeah, that'd be great, so, yeah.
So.
That, we're not, we're not making decisions, we're just sharing.
She'll say things to us and maybe, you know.
Um, no, I mean, if any one of us, we. Okay.
The other, and then, but then.
But, yeah, so, um, but so.
No, sorry, it's, fine.
Well, I'm gonna go right, so, I mean, happy to do any of them, I know Natasha and I are doing seniors, you get that. Yeah, yeah, I, I personally don't. Yeah, that, that date works fine, yeah, maybe, so that's a good outreach in that. And then, so these other three that we're talking about, these two people want to sign up for one of them, maybe. Now to the individual schools with the date. Uh, there, too, is, I mean, there's someone who's taking the view, um, uh, you know, who wants to kind of. That. Well, and then we also. Right, right, so, but these are staff to go audience for this staff, right, and then to always kind of advance, but. Yeah, as well, so I think that, um. I almost feel like we need to get out a document, I'll, I'll create a draft document, just to kind of get these out there, like, outreach efforts, I think we talked about, just to kind of consolidate them, but like. And, uh. But she, yeah, similar to that, where we could like sign up. Yeah, okay, alright. Uh, so they, and then we don't have particular dates, but we just have just timeframes and, uh, dates that were best. So. Bones, we drop in, back to. I could do a morning, um, that, I could do that. Or two people, too, yeah, but like morning, if morning doesn't work, that's, I was thinking. So I don't know, there's a different, you know, maybe that may be better, I don't know. Yeah, so that's why I was, I think Hillary now, those are mornings, there, so. I have school view, too, she. No, she might not do that, she's going to voice, I think she was talking about this, so maybe that might be. An update for. So maybe Natasha. I can figure out what day works for you, reach out to. Yeah, actually, I need to reach out to. Yes, the preschool, I was the one in the class. Do the flower and high school.
I could do the, I could do flowers, but, um, high school's too.
I could do the. I can do that from school, I can do the flower, that's fine, uh, but, I guess, I put that Smith and I for the flower, so we can coordinate. What works for a date, and then you guys, any of the three of you can do. Oh, that's right, you can, you can do, I can do that. Just, you know, schedule. Yeah, I think we're just trying to get, yeah, yeah. Because it's just, yeah. Alright, that's good, alright, I'm sending so, everybody should they know where they're going, and then you guys can walk straight dates. Okay, um, and I'm gonna just, the. For us, has, uh, something to make a point, so.
Wait, hold on, before I, I knew we were in the, um, in these, should we be ready to talk about the GM building, and all of these except for the staff?
I don't think that's our purview.
I know that, but I think it's, they're gonna ask, if we're going to places.
Direct them to Jerry's, you know. Yeah, I wouldn't feel, like, I haven't been part of those comments, that decision-making is deep, and I, I, I would, I could talk about, like, needs of the educational part, like, you know, and. But as far as.
And there should be another kind of advocate for our building, so. Advising. Doesn't. They would say. And that's, like, like summer, end of summer, because if we go out now, then we'll, we'll, like. They can push them suffer, I guess, but we continue, see.
I'll say two things to that, I, I, I get the logic that, on, leaving up to town, we get a lot of tone. And. Our bad conversations weigh all their interests or impact. You know, what that looks like, so I just said that that might, to, you might, and then heading into the, at the end of summer, like, fall, um. You might get a lot of. So I just want to think that transition, um, none of the given schools doing one of those, that school, part of that, and. Um, so it will seem like a lot, but I, I know what you're thought of.
So for now, reject it.
Okay.
So no, no, so, your fortune.
Right, uh, Mary, uh, just the wellness, uh, maybe we had. Yesterday morning, or like. Last night, but anyway, um, always great, great meetings, but it was talk about the, the food services, there's been communication between, especially the high school students and, and Whitson, so that's. Better, um, one of the great things is that, um, for the wellness policy, so what we're honing in on right now is nutrition, uh, nutrition is taught at different grade levels. While we're waiting for the updated health curriculum, which, when was it, I, I, so we're waiting on that, so that's something productive, it's, um, it's being done. The, um, members of the wellness committee, uh, went, um, talked to Fowler in high school, um, just to give a brief summary of what the wellness policy is all about, it was conversation about bringing, so, you know, to school and. And, uh, you know, celebrations, including food, so stuff that the, um, not all staff was aware of, it's really good, and they're trying to do the same, similar things. Mark. I am doing charting for Saturday. So. Well, it's, I'm new, uh, you. Have to do it, oh, because of range of your service.
It's still remote, right, you don't have to go anywhere.
Uh, no, I'm going into Asabat. Yep, exactly, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, exactly, yeah. No, no, it's fine, see, if you were. Alright. Bring back some, um, you want to guess, or? Some swag. Anything else? No, I think that's it, okay, um, talk about budgets, I'm not, what's that, except for the fact that budget committee meeting, uh, it was initially proposed that this is a hundred fifty-five thousand dollar. Um, projection of possibly less expenses that we would be able to somewhere else, and. As soon as you said that, we got Asabat's work back, and Asabat was, um, we're having to do a six percent allocation to them as opposed to a two point five or something to that effect. And so a lot of the money was gonna go there instead, uh, it was suggested that it would be a deputy fire chief to be hired, and it was not very well received. You know, for a little space, so. That, uh, the trash, that continues to be, so, I don't think there's, it sounded like that the contract. Next year, so that's not gonna. Right, because you've got that trap, the task force. Task force, right, and, you know, hobbies to pass to, um. They have to do, their contract is up in June, so they have to contract, they're not having enough time for the changeover, and plus, if there is cars, that's also an expensive town, you know. Let me go to. Idea of jurors. Being open to. You can come up in our town budget subcommittee. And feedback for budgets. We're not, we're not, without the, the, or maybe acceptable from. But I can say like this, well, okay, it was also introduced again, so I would just think. Yeah, yeah, is there?
I actually don't see how, they're, they're.
I think, I, again, I don't, I, yeah, I don't know, yeah, I think so, before we're, that's so broadly, that just have compliment that it is. Um, and, you know, before people start thinking that's what we're gonna do, uh, maybe. Actually, it was the world, like, I don't know how great this is, but, um. I think, yeah, so, I think that still is, it's a. So, that was what shared with, this a lot more, um. As far as that potentially be. What. I have personnel. Off a little bit, so I think. Now, and. Uh, oh, it's up with my, I think, because of my.
Because I have to work.
Oh. We backed over this. Okay, Susan, no, thank you.
Okay, Susan, no, thank you. January fifth and January. Minutes. An objection, I will accept. For ten minutes, great. That's twenty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, twenty-three, forty-seven, twenty-three, forty-eight. That objection. Okay, great. Now, because everyone's. Moving into my executive session, was like, it's like, we just kind of. And executive session under. Third session in preparation for negotiation with the non-personal. Personnel superintendent. Yes. Yes, okay. So we are back. So we are back, so I will. Make a motion that we approve terms, execute super. Five-year contract, back in July first, twenty-two point three. And. On there. Time, thank you very much, we can forward to another. Three, five years, and. All right. Yes, okay. Aldrin, yes. Also, I don't think I actually did.